At home and here in person, we will be starting our workshop for our fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed budget. Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor Board. I know, I know 5:30 is tough, but I think, I think this is probably the best way to cover as much information as we can and as conveniently as possible. I did want to let everybody know that the certified tax rate has come in and it has been verified by the State Board of Equalization. And so it is in, been, I've taken out the verbiage that we would insert it and just went ahead and inserted it. It's supposed to be revenue neutral. Any growth in property tax revenue this year should be from new developed, new, new growth, not because our tax rate increased. With that being said, let's jump straight into the pay plan on page 23. And we will discuss any questions you have on that. The first page of the pay plan is classified service positions. Not all of these positions are filled, but just some, we may look to some of these in the future. If you go down on the left, it's each department's classified positions. And then whether they're salaried or not, it gives a pay grades for each position. In our pay plan, we have a great 28 grades, which is when we get to it here in just a minute, it, the grades increase 5% per each grade. So if you go from one grade up, it's a 5% increase. If you go, and then it also has 15 steps. So top out pay is step 15. And that is, you know, unless the pay plan is changed in the future, that's, that's where we are. Any questions on the first two pages, 23 or 24?
Tom?
Yes?
Who decides on the, the pay grade when the person is employed?
Some of these have been historical, some of them new positions. We put it in and it is voted on by the Board of Commissioners in the pay plan.
And also, don't you research other cities of our size?
Oh, sure, sure, yes.
And check to see what the competitive rate for those cities are and what we need to be at to be competitive, to get really good quality employees?
I misunderstood the question, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh huh. If you go to page 25, these are the hourly rates for, as you see, it goes from grade 1 through 28 and step 1 through 15. It is divided into four sections. 1 through 8 is primarily employees who entry level or non-supervisory roles. Then 9 through 15 is some supervisory roles, some management roles, and then, and some, could be some departmental head roles. But, and then 16 through 27 is professional, most of the department heads, just, just more highly trained, more responsible positions. And then the city manager is the top, number 28, under contract. This year, we are asking, proposing 1% COLA for grades 1 through 15. And then 16 through 28, we're asking for a 0% COLA. We want to keep our, we feel like we don't want to get too top-heavy. We feel like we're very competitive in our professional and upper-level management positions. We feel like we need to keep staying competitive with, with some of our lower-paying positions. So that's the thinking behind that. Also, on, on the city manager pay, it's based on contract. You know, there's not really a step, there's not this. It's just based on what the contract says, which is a 2% annual. So, any questions on the hourly?
What was the COLA on the 1 through 15 again?
1%. And what that does is that just adds 1% to the, to the first number. These first numbers in each, like say on the column 1, that's $17.00 and .3034. It just, 1% was added to that, and then it adds to the rest. And then the, on the next one, 1% was added to 9. And then nothing was added to 16 or 28. So if that, if that makes sense how it's calculated.
Mayor?
Yes?
I just got a quick question. Did you have any objections from the employees as far as the COLA?
No.
I, I know that we had no objection back years ago when we didn't, wasn't able to give a COLA raise. And I just wanted to have, I know we got good employees, and I just wondered if you had any objection this year?
We, we met on it, met separately with each department head. I know Chief Humphries took it to his, his team of captains and, and upper-level, and they all supported it. They understand that, you know, there are years that, that we were doing really well, and there's years we need to pump on the brakes. And so one other thing to consider is, you know, we, we've gotten some substantial pay increases over the last two years. And so we, we wanted to keep, they, they all keep that in mind. And we feel like we're competitive in these positions.
Well, good. And thank them for, for understanding that, too. Thank you.
If you go to page 26, it's the same thing, except it's just the annual salary. So if you take the annual salary, if you go to page 27, and I'm going to keep names out of this just for respect to staff, but I'm, I'm like, if you go down through the fiscal year 25 salaries, this is not what was budgeted. This is what their annual salary would have been. So some people were hired in maybe mid-year and didn't get the full amount. But this is what they, their, their rate was. So if you look over to the right on the percentages, you know, you see most folks are at 4%. So that is their 1% COLA and their 3% step. You've got some that are more. That is a promotion, most likely. And I'm, I'm fine with sitting down with anybody. If anybody wants to discuss the grades, but if you go in the fiscal year 26 grading step, you look on there, you should be able to go over to your salaries and see it should be that number. If that, any questions on that? Am I being clear?
Are you asking if we have any questions, just about the process or about?
Well, I'm just talking about where these numbers come from. Is everybody clear with that? Or do I need to explain that further? So basically, for, for the primarily, we're right at, you know, increasing, right around the 4% range, which I feel like is, is healthy and keeps us moving forward. This is, I'll, any other questions on it? That's pretty much how it works. You know, like I said, everything is revenue-driven. We would always, we would love to ask for a 2%, 2 or 3% COLA every year, but you know, it's just, you just, it's just not, it's just not sustainable when the revenue doesn't support it. If there's any questions whatsoever, I'll entertain them. I am also available. We've got three weeks between now and the second read. I would be more than happy to go over anything one-on-one. Staff, I'm sure, will be more than willing. So I just feel like it's, it's, you know, just a stable, maintained pay, pay plan this year. And then with, keeping in mind, we've had some substantial increases over the past two years.
Mr. Doherty, most of these are 2, 3, 4%, which you explained, and that makes a lot of sense. And you mentioned if they're going outside of that range, it's likely because of a promotion?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a couple of staff listed who have starting dates that are, one is this year, one was January 24. So relatively new hires. Another one, 24, January 24 up here. And they've got 8%.
Yes. This was a decision that I made in discussion with, I'm thinking you're talking about parks.
Well, there's a couple of parks, and then I think a couple in the.
Okay. The, the two in the park, and I didn't realize this, but require a college degree. And I, I feel like it, I reclassified it from a level five grade to a level six grade. So that's where the increase comes from.
Is there, is there a place just for our own knowledge where we can locate what the requirements are for grade-specific on the, for state employee? I guess it's like, is this a state scale, like where you get the grades?
This is a play plan that's been put in place, maybe started six, seven years ago?
Is it a standard that was set by the city?
Yes. It's, state law states that we have to have a pay plan approved by the Board of Commissioners with the budget. So this is the pay plan we've chose to do. There's, there's lots of different ways to go about it. Kind of late in the game to, to look at change, look at doing any major changes at this moment. But, you know, if, if there's anything that, that the board would like to look at as far as adjustments or, or changes, that is something we definitely can look at.
Well, it's definitely premature for me to be talking about adjustments and changes because I'm just asking questions about, about that. So is there a place where we would know the difference between a grade for someone who has a college education versus somebody who doesn't have a degree? Or is there a?
Probably the easiest.
Well, real, real quick, I'll finish this and then I'll, then I'll, because it goes with it. Or is there a, an experience can replace education? So years of experience equal this level of degree?
It depends. It, a lot of it is, is a department head and city manager discussion as far as the employee, their merit, their, their quality of work, their, you know, it would be a managerial decision. It wouldn't be, I would say it would be base by base, based by case-by-case basis. But there are generalizations. In all of our job descriptions, it's, that, it tells where, where they start. Now, you've got some positions, you know, all start at whatever grade in step one. Then you've got some other positions that might be a little more negotiable. If I had to go out and hire a new police chief, well, you may or may not put them in at step one. If, if they've got quite a bit of experience and, you know, that we make it negotiate starting at step five. So it's, it's, it's just case-by-case. It's not as, as, as cookie cutter as, as you want to, it's not just a finite.
Yeah. Well, and I, and I appreciate that there's a little bit of wiggle room for it, but it also doesn't leave staff with a lot of understanding of, of what to expect, maybe. And this takes us back to a conversation we had a few months ago about evaluation. So do they know how to get to the next step? Do they know how to be successful and what that looks like?
Yes.
And that's something that we've agreed to work on and build out this summer. And I think that is helping me come full circle and understand how this all works.
Yes. And I think, I think once you, you, you see how most of our employees and all of our employees are evaluated daily, but it's not, we, we are more than willing to look at any of that. And anything we can improve on process or way we do business is, we're always open to looking at that. So.
Yeah. I think people like to be evaluated. They'd like to know what they're doing well, what they can work on, what that, what that looks like and the measure. And, and then that time of service could replace a degree would be something that I'd really like to see fleshed out a little bit. But that's not this conversation, so.
Well, we are open to looking at any ideas. And I know Commissioner McDonald has, is, expressed interest in that. And it's, it's a municipal governments, it's a unique, especially, especially public safety. It's a unique situation. You know, that's, you know, about 75% of our employment. So I guess it's going to be, it's going to be some work, but I'm, we're willing to jump in there with you.
Yeah, absolutely. And if there is any documentation on how these grade scales are determined, if there's any documentation from back when it was decided, or if you can point me to the BOC meeting I can listen to or something, that would be really helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Doherty?
Yes?
Quick question. So when you're putting out a, a notice of employment on the website or, or putting it out into the public, and you advertise, say, a job is $50,000, and you have two or three candidates that are all equally qualified, do you have the liberty, without the board acknowledging, that you can raise the scale level on, on your own?
Our charter does give me the authority to hire and fire to my judgment. Granted, I need to stay under the budget that y'all provide me. And that's, that's what I do.
Okay. So just throwing this out there, say you have two or three candidates that are all very qualified, and the decision, decision comes down to salary, but one person's asking for less, one's person's asking for more. Would you default to the lesser salary to save the city money? Or would you offer that position to someone that gets, that is asking for more money?
Again, I think that'd be on a case-to-case basis and depending. Most of the time, we do our evaluations on a panel level. And it would be, ultimately, it could be my decision, but in reality, 99% of the time, it's, it's a team, team decision.
Who's the team? You and the department head?
The panel. I don't, I don't have a lot of, we have an HR presence with police and fire, but I don't, I don't tell them who to hire and who not to hire. I'll say, you know, I may, I may give an, you know, what do you think about this? Or they might ask, what do you think about this? But I'm not, I'm not going to micromanage somebody's talent in a, in a field that, that we have more expertise than, I don't have a background there.
One more question. Do we have any budget in the near future for HR?
I think we, we will, probably in the next year or two. We've, we've gone, we'll have some attrition coming up. And, and that, I've been probably leaning towards having some HR talent in replacing some of that.
Thank you.
Under fire, just because I'm curious, what is the difference between a firefighter and an engineer slash driver?
A piece of paper. They get their, their certification to drive the truck.
So the engineer slash driver is also a firefighter?
Correct.
Just, they've gone through training to drive the truck?
Yes. They have the certifications to be behind the wheel of the truck. And they, you know, a lot of these, you know, they're, they're split up between shifts. So, you know, you want to have at least three to four on a shift. Because sometimes you might take out multiple trucks.
I have another question from Mr. Doherty, please. Mr. Commissioner Buffalini brought up the possibility of a future hire for a HR person. I think I've heard you mention in the past, possibly a future hire for a grant writer. Have you put any more thought into that?
Yes, sir. Most of the work that, that our economic development officer is doing on grants, the, the service would be, most of them we're looking at right now could be provided through either GNRC, or TDOT, or some of the, some of the organizations that we're working with. We've been fortunate that Jake Warren, I'm, I'm going to quit using names, our safety officer, training officer, and Captain Warren with the Fire Department, he's, he's pretty talented in some of the grant writing they do. The Police Department has a captain that is pretty talented in the, the grants that they've gone through. But as of right now, until we see a huge need of a lot of grants that, that we can't get taken care of professionally with an outside source, it does not make financial sense to me to, to buy something before we need it. I'm not saying we won't need it down the road, but I, as of right now, I don't see, see the, the huge benefit at the moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Doherty, so when you're looking at the page 23, for example, classified service positions, you've got, I guess there's, there's roles in there that we don't currently have filled, and these aren't necessarily budgeted for. This is just those positions, if we had them, that would be the pay scale?
Correct.
Okay. And nor, nor in the budget for them, correct?
Correct. If, and like I said, I'm, I'm available. And staff, department heads are available right now and then. I'm going to keep moving unless there's, there's anything else that's just glaring.
I've got one, one quick question, just to make sure I'm reading this right. So you've given to us their, the COLA allowance and the, the additional raise, the step raise. And then we've got this other page for longevity pay. And that goes for certain staff who have served for five or more years.
Correct.
Is there a location in all of this where we have every person line by line with their final total that includes longevity, step, and COLA?
We've got page 30 that, that outlays everybody's longevity. And then page, pages 28 and 27 outlines everybody's step and COLA.
Yes. And so what I'm asking is, do we have another page that has all of that combined and shows everyone's final total?
Uh, no, ma'am, we do not. But it wouldn't be hard to put together.
But it would be fair to say that if I added page 30 longevity pay to pages 27 or 28 for any single staff person, that would be the exact dollar amount that they're getting paid?
Should be.
It should be, or it would be?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless, unless there was a human error in, in some entry. But I, I think it would be, yes.
So on page 27, where it says fiscal year 20, 26 salaries, that's, that's their pay, right? Their pay for 26?
Yes, yes. As we go through the, go through the departmental budgets, you should see in salaries in administration, 429174. You should see in court salaries, 180081. And it should go down every other department. Also, there's a line item in each department for longevity pay. And so each, like say for administration, longevity pay should be a total of 1925 in the budget.
And would the FY25 salaries listed on pages 27 and 28 include longevity pay?
No.
So when you're doing the increases, the percentages are based on the salary that was just last year's step rate and COLA, if they had it? But it, but longevity pay is outside of those increases?
Correct.
Thank you.
And it has been, it was, it was, it was just requested by employees. It was, it was a long-time benefit years ago. And then it was not here when I first got here. And something we looked at and for, you know, the minute amount of the budget that it takes up, I felt like it was a pretty good benefit. And we usually try to distribute it in November, right, right, right around Christmas time.
So it's a one-time pay that they just get later? It's not rolled into paychecks monthly? Okay. This is really helpful. Thanks for explaining that.
There's some other departments, public safety, that get, get, get other pay, too. But it's, it's like in-service pay, that they, they turn in their hours to the state. The state pays us, and then we turn around and pay them. Of course, we have to eat the taxes, but we do get paid the salaries on the, on the in-service pay. Let's move to page 5 on, on the detail. This is the Board of Commissioners' budget. We have tried to put in some money for you guys to travel and train. We have tried to put in some money for community development. This line item is dedicated for nonprofits in the city of Fairview. So if you have a, have a passion that you want to invest in, this is, you have $5,000 at your disposal to, as long as it's, our only requirement is it's, it's, it's a nonprofit.
And we can break it up?
And at the city of Fairview.
And we can break it up into different nonprofits?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Let's see. We put in, you know, we try to provide the, the Board of Commissioners with a cellphone and an iPad. If you, you know, we, we throw in a little bit, but everybody should have one. So we've got a low budget on that. But it, just to, so everybody knows, we've got $250 in the budget for, for lack of a better word, swag. If you, if you want something with the city logo on it, you can reach out to Rachel. Or if you want to go out and get it yourself and, and get reimbursed, give Rachel or Ben your receipts. And, you know, we can, we can work that way as well. We just, it's sometimes it's, it's good. Some folks like to, to use it to promote the city and others don't. So it's just totally up to you. In the training, Mayor Anderson asked to go to the trip in Minnesota that.
Leadership conference?
Yeah, through Williamson, Inc. And so that's the, that difference. And then I believe it's going to be $3,200. And then that leaves 800 for other training and travel. But that's. But that's, that's the difference. We kept the bottom line number the exact same as, as what it was last year.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Question under the travel and training. So, everyone gets $750, mayor gets $4,000. Last year I got $6250. The $4,000 is for a trip to Minnesota.
$3,200.
All right, $3,200 from Minnesota, leaving the $750 as a remaining balance. So, the $3,200 covers Williamson, Inc., room and board and travel?
Well, it's not Williamson, Inc. They sponsored the trip, but it's a leadership conference. All of the mayors in Williamson County go. It covers airfare, hotel, a few meals. Anything else, as, as like I put in my report that I gave to each one of you, that is over and above that, there were several meals, coffee, breakfast, anything else we did above the airfare, hotel, and a few meals that they cover, I paid for out of my pocket and never asked to be reimbursed. Matter of fact, all the meetings that I go to weekly, which probably add up to about eight different meetings, some I drive to, some I ride with Patty Carroll. If it is my car that I drive, I never ask to be reimbursed for gas. I, I don't ask to ever be reimbursed for anything above this trip and the other meetings that require to be paid. Just like the meeting that all of us went to, breakfast with the mayors, is a certain amount of money. I don't even know how much it is because I don't sign myself up. But that comes out of this expense.
Okay, Mayor Anderson, you, you said you submitted us the, your report from Utah?
I did.
However, this is the same exact report that I got in an email from Williamson, Inc. They're the ones that wrote this. Because it's exactly what I have in an email, the attachments. So, I'm just curious when you're going to explain to the board?
I did that before y'all were elected, but if you'd like me to do it again, I can. Because the trip happened before y'all were elected. So, if you'd like me to do it again, I can.
If, that would be great, if possible, in the future.
Or if you'd like me to do a full report on this trip, since it's during the time that you are actually commissioners, then I, it would be what I would consider a better use of report because that one was before, you know, you were on the board. So, I feel like the information that was given by Williamson, Inc., I'm not going to change anything. That's exactly the itinerary. We did nothing above and beyond the itinerary that I gave you and that Williamson, Inc. provided. So, I don't know, like, what else you'd want to know. But I'm happy to answer the question.
So, with some of these other trips that are, that are afforded to, to us, would it be possible that other board members or vice mayor can attend these conferences as well? Or is it just for the mayor?
Some are just for the mayor, some are for all of us. And like you've gone to breakfast with the mayors, there's a fee attached to that. And just, you know, anything that y'all want to go to, you're more than welcome to sign up. But some are just for mayors. Because the mayor of the city represents our city, and that was what I was elected to do. And some of the, I don't set it up if it's just for the mayor, or if it's just, or if it's open to all the commissioners. But what I suggest is the Williamson, Inc. and Franklin Tomorrow websites. If you get on those, they will send you emails as to every single opportunity to be at one of the conferences.
Yeah, we all get that. Thank you very much.
If there's something, you know, we, we, we need to kind of look ahead and, you know, and budget and plan. But if there is something, I've never been approached by another commissioner to, you know, for any additional. If, if you need additional, or if you, you want, you need more, like I say, we, we amend the budget usually around the holidays. You know, we, we can look at it. The main thing is, is, you know, is it's going, going for better service to the, to the citizens. And I'm, I am, I'll look at whatever, whatever the board chooses. Main thing is, is, is one of, we want you to have the, the resources and, and the support to feel like you have what you need to serve your position at, at your best ability. So, anyway.
And I'll just say that, like, the more all of us as a group represent the city of Fairview, the more opportunities we bring to the city of Fairview. Because when I got elected two years ago, I would go to different conferences and meetings, and they'd say, "Fairview's here." And I'm like, "What's that supposed to mean?" After Patty Carroll, there was a lull between her and me of representation for, for our city at these different events, which afford us information for grants. And, you know, being on the GNRC board and getting to vote on the Greater Nashville Regional Council where we are working together to do things more regionally so we can handle traffic and water, sewer, solid waste. Those are so important. And I see it a benefit for the whole board to be involved in everything that they can be. So.
Mayor?
Yes.
I might just add on, on the GNRC, it's very informative. And, you know, like you said, a lot of the people there do like to see Fairview show up. And especially some of the other mayors and the counties around. Like Bob Riley, I've become a good friend, the mayor of Dixon County, when I was attending those meetings. So, it is, if you got the time, it's, it doesn't cost anything except your time and travel to and from. It doesn't cost to get in there or anything. So, I think the city pays a fee to the GNRC yearly for anybody that wants to go. So, it's very informative.
And also, the mayors of the city are voting members on GNRC and the transportation board. So, I go there to make our, to represent our city and have our voice heard. And vote on these different issues that are very important. Plus, I, you know, get good information that I bring back to the community. Like I did, you know, last month, talking about everything that, my, what I do is I give it to Richard, and he puts it under, you know, on our website so that people can have access to different grants. And, you know, there's a lot of information about help for senior citizens and people with mental, mental illness. And that's so important because a lot of people who deal with maybe family members or elderly parents, they may not know where to go. So, it's, it's good to have, you know, that information on our website so that we, you know, they can have opportunity to know where to get help if they need it.
Anything else on BLC? Let's go to page 8. Which is court. It, um, they, fairly the same, the, the primary increase was in salaries, but it's because they had a late hire in the year. So, you know, they, they had two last year, just a late hair, late hire.
Is our court clerk here today, or no?
No, she's not. Here, she's here every day, and I can, I can probably answer most, any question on here that you have, or I, I can get it for you.
So, Mr. Doherty, do you feel like court sustains itself? Or do we have to, for lack of a better word, pitch in?
Court, over the last four to five years, has, has been in the black substantially enough to where I, I felt comfortable hiring another support assistant. And this past year, it has dipped just a little bit. I anticipate it going back up dramatically. We had a kind of a change in the DA's office and the, the judge. And anyway, we, we were having some stuff that, that we were missing. Not that we want to do court for profit or court for, or, or police for profit, but, you know, it's, it's, we, we're having some cases dismissed. And that, you know, probably would have put more money in the coffers. So, we've had meetings, and I feel like things are going in, in a much better direction as far as that. And I feel like our, we're going to see a substantial upswing in, in receipts from the court.
Just for context, Mr. Doherty, when you say it has been well into the black, what is, what do you?
I, I say between 50,000 to 65,000, in that range over the last four to five years.
Net positive?
Yes.
So, when it dipped, when you said it, we've, we've experienced a dip, is that, are we, are we now below zero?
Well, we haven't, we haven't finished the year. If you want to track it, on your revenue page, which is on page, page 1, if you look at 35110, 35130, and 35160, that is the court revenue. I dropped it down. I think it's going to take an upswing. But if you add 235, and you add 33, and you add 200, you know, that's just a shade under the 276 in the budget. But I, I anticipate those numbers to come in higher than what we budgeted. On paper, right now, you're, you're showing the court at about $10,000.
8,754.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mayor, I have another question from Mr. Doherty. Are we doing pretty good at collecting our fines?
I believe it's, it's going to be much more, yes, yes, we are. We, we're, there's not, I know what you're talking about. There's, there's not a lot of outstanding things just sitting. It's, we've done a good job of getting current and up to date.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Doherty, does our, uh, officer that we have down in planning, does that fines go towards court? Or does that go towards planning department? If he writes fines, does he write fines? Can he write fines?
If there is a municipal fine that is found to be enforced by the judge, that would go towards the court. That is a misdemeanor charge, that would be, the fine would go towards the court system.
So, the codes enforcement officer doesn't write tickets to developers or anything like that? I, I'm not exactly sure of his position.
There, he has a ticket book and is certified to do that through the police department. But ultimately, that is adjudicated by the, the judge, and that is, falls within the court system once it leaves our office.
Okay.
So, he writes the tickets, but then they have to come to our court for it to be heard?
Right. No, I understand that, yeah. I just didn't know the process or, for, for that position itself.
And, trust me, I feel like that was needed because we've got a lot of things I consider needing to be cleaned up around Fairview, properties and different things like that. I just always talk about beautifying, so I think that's very important. Especially like abandoned houses and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else on court? Um, let's go to page 9, finance. Everything's pretty level, except for the audit. We're anticipating quite a bit of expenses going towards the American Rescue Plan, and will definitely be over $750,000. And that requires an extra report that they turn in, and that'll be, that's the addition. And that'll be not an ongoing. So, you know, we can probably take that 10.5 off after the American Rescue Plan monies are exhausted. Planning and codes. We've got a little bit of a jump on engineering services. We are currently using, um, three, three professionals on a regular basis, and we're probably going to add another. And then, you know, we also have the expertise, so they're into our office if, if needed. So, I don't know that we'll hit 315. I hope we're, I think we'll be under. But I just wanted to, that, that we've got one extra individual who has a lot of experience in, in processes and planning and codes, and consulting with planning and codes. And he's going to be meeting with, with our department and, and just kind of auditing function and, and, and best practice, and just, just giving our guy, our, our team some ideas as far as maybe efficiencies. But I, I believe, um, I don't think it'll be a ton of extra, but I, there is some extra put in for some of those services.
Doherty, I have a couple of questions in regards to that. And this is in no way personal towards the staff that we have that come from the engineering services team. However, I'd just like to wrap my head around some data points a little bit. So, the $275,000 that was budgeted last year, we spent all of that, I'm guessing?
I think we'll be right, right, pretty close on it, yes.
Do we have numbers that you could tell us on a weekly basis, how many hours we're getting out of the three individuals that give us their time?
Yes, we get a monthly invoice. I could, I could pull those, pull those numbers out pretty easily.
What I'm getting at is, you know, I look at that number of 315, and I don't know what the going rate for an engineer is. Call it 100,000. Three full-time engineers dedicated specifically to the city that are not dividing their time amongst other projects through other municipalities or whatever they have their time dedicated to. To me, seems like you would gain intimate knowledge of our city to where that would streamline situations that would come down the road in the future. Because you would have working knowledge of the city and how it works. And I, just curious if we could entertain that conversation to see if there would be benefit to going back to full-time engineering staff that's dedicated specifically to us versus... Because what I'd be interested to see when I asked about the hours is, you know, if we're spending that money, but we're only getting, say, on average, 30 hours per individual that's coming to us, then we're paying basically full-time salary for part-time work, if that makes sense. And, and I'm just assuming numbers here, but I don't know. Like, do Curtis and the, the like, are they putting 40 hours every single week in with us? Because if not, then I see it as we're spending full-time money for part-time labor, if that makes sense.
I totally get your, where you're coming from, and I'll be more than happy to sit down. I think it's something we could do a work session on and, and look at it. I personally am 180 the other direction because I've seen it both ways. But it's probably not something that's going to change this budget right now.
Sure, it's not necessarily a budget.
But I, I think it's, it's, I'm always willing to look at ways to improve. I will tell you, just, this is my only comment I'll make on it. You, with a, a whole office, a whole company, you, you have a, a area of expertise, or, or at least access to expertise that you'll never get in a single engineer who is, has base, is, is, they, they have gone to school, and usually they're either in just traffic, or just stormwater, or just this, or just that. And so, it's really beneficial sometimes to have a broad range of expertise, that that's what this gives us. But, you know, that, that, I'm, I'm more than willing to look at every option.
Yeah, and I would love to have that conversation. And I, I concede what you, the point you're making. I, I totally understand that. My curiosity would go to... point you're making. I, I totally understand that. My curiosity would go to, how often are we leaning into those specialty roles? Um, and this is by no means a dig towards the, the work that we get out of those guys. I, it hasn't, it's not personal, it's just numbers, looking at it. Um, I'd just be curious to have that conversation, and just make sure that that money is being spent wisely. I think as much as you're right, there's a additional opportunity when you have a, um, you know, a company like that, that has experts in a lot of different areas, that you can draw on them or pull them into the fray when needed. Um, but I think there is also something to say that when you in this, when, when the city of Fairview is your sole focus, you have, um, there's more passion, there's more, um, buy-in, and there's more, um, just understanding of the city as a whole, on how it works, I think to a degree. I mean, I think that's pretty logical for people to, to, to draw those conclusions. So it would just be interesting to have that conversation. And if the numbers are, you know, half a dozen, you know, whatever the saying is, then it's like kind of a moot point. But it'd be interesting to see, if, just to dig into.
We'll definitely put that on a topic and, and get it, get, get some finite facts and, and, uh, numbers.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, just so that you're aware, um, Mr. Doherty was correct. Most of the time, you only ever see Curtis, Will, or Kevin here. Typically, in, you know, a standard week in the city of Fairview, we have about eight members of Griggs and Maloney staff that traverse the city, doing multiple different types of projects. And so whenever you look at it from a three-person perspective, that does break down to about a hundred grand a person. We utilize about eight of their, uh, staff members on a pretty frequent basis. And so that makes that number a lot more reasonable and a lot more digestible.
Yeah, and, and that, to the point, is why I wanna have this conversation, 'cause not having that knowledge or understanding makes it difficult to, you know, try to make decisions that are best for the city. So I think it would be great to just have a, a better working knowledge for all five of us to understand the relationship that we have with that, with, with that firm, and, you know, what we really do get out of it. So when those convers, I mean, just transparency, this is a conversation that citizens have asked me, why don't we have our own paid staff? Um, it's a good question. But if I have, you know, information like that to say, well, because we're getting this, 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 and this, and I think the hourly thing would be really good to know, too, um, that we are getting full employment, whether it be part-time over eight individuals, or full, whatever, however the numbers work out. But it would just be good to know the actual hours that are being dedicated from that firm to the city of Fairview.
And Vice Mayor, I'd like to add, I, I, um, fully agree with what you're saying. I've, I've just, I've been here, uh, long enough that I've seen both. Um, Griggs and Maloney was here, um, when I was on the Planning Commission before I became mayor, and then a prior administration decided to go a different direction, brought in, um, a junior engineer and a senior engineer. They had specific, um, um, like, one was a traf, yes, thanks. Um, one was a traffic engineer, and the other one was civil, but, but new to, um, you know, like a junior engineer. So I felt like when I needed to meet with them, the expertise that they had was not well-rounded, and I just didn't feel like we, like we have with Griggs, they have all the spectrum, and they use, they utilize that, you know, that whole group. So we've got, um, and Will, as far as knowing the city of Fairview, um, he's been around, what, twenty? Twenty years? It's at least been twenty years. He, he has worked with us on projects out here, so Will knows the city of Fairview very well, and knows its history and what we're doing today. But also, just having thi, this number, actually, 'cause that was my field before I opened my own business, um, for twenty years, it, it's, um, I feel like, in my opinion, it's very reasonable. A workshop would be great, so everybody understands. But going from, uh, Griggs and Maloney, the group, and having all the expertise, to having two engineers on staff that had just simple expertise in two different fields of the whole gamut, and then going back to Griggs and Maloney, I just feel like we are back having a group that if, you know, Curtis has a question of a different, um, you know, part of this whole engineering field, he can go to someone else in, uh, Griggs and Maloney and get their input on it. So I don't know. That's, that's just, uh, what I've seen over the years. I just think, um, a small town like ours, you know, we can't afford like, you know, maybe like a Franklin, where they can have different engineers on staff with different specialties. So us having a group that we go to, that they have all the different specialties in one house, they can actually reach out and ask questions of all the different ones and get their, uh, way in on it. So that's kind of just how I see it, being involved in both situations.
Yeah, and Mayor, I appreciate your comments. I just wanna make clear, I'm not suggesting we do one way or the other.
Right, right.
I just would like to have
Right.
a better understanding of how that money is being spent and what we're getting out of it. Not that we're not getting what we need to be getting out of it. This, like I said, Griggs and Maloney does a great job. I, I have no issue with that. It's not a, uh, uh, an attack on them by any means. It's just trying to understand where that money's going, and just, just, that's all.
And I, I don't mean to, I think we, I think we, you know, I think we're all in agreement, we can look at this. I don't wanna, you know, if, if, if there's an issue with the number, you know, we can, we can maybe adjust it down some, but I, that's what I feel comfortable with. If, um, there's only a couple more here that, you know, may have questions about, but, but, you know, I'm, I wanna make sure we get through this before our meeting. So, um, if you got another question, maybe we can, you know, shoot me an email, or let's, let's discuss it, uh, maybe one-on-one. Um, but I, I think, um, on the GIS, we may be overshooting here. Um, we had it at seventy-five-hundred, and they came in at eleven, almost twelve thousand this year, and, you know, they, it caused us to go down for a little bit, uh, on Thursday, but I got a, I got a invoice for forty-nine-hundred the other day, and for the GIS. So, you know, I'm hoping, we took a lot of fluff out of it that, that was in there previously, and so I'm hoping that twelve thousand is gonna be more like five thousand this year. And then, uh, but at, at the time, putting this together, um, you know, that, that was the number we were looking at. Um, we're really excited about GovWell, the, the cost, we're getting more service, less cost. Um, and then, if you're looking at office equipment lease, why, it was nothing last year. Uh, Todd has no copier, but his department was getting charged for this, so we moved it over to planning. Um, and that, everything else is pretty much the same. But any other questions?
Plan review services went down because we're doing that in-house now, is that correct?
Uh, yes, some, we're doing, we're able to do some. We're still gonna have to rely on them on some commercial, uh, reviews, but we've, we've, uh, we're, we're moving, where we are getting closer and closer to be able to handle a lot of our, our, um, residential reviews.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my question.
Oh.
I, for, I, for the new folks, planning and codes have come so far, we blew up, the whole department blew up, um, almost totally a year and a half ago, and we're, we're, I feel like we're doing an excellent job, uh, rebuilding, and I just can't commend the department. It's, it's the youngest department, uh, they, they, but they have a lot of energy, and they, they're doing a really good job. Um, anything else on, on planning and codes? Let's go to page seventeen on Public Works. Uh, on the first page, that, that contract mowing probably jumps out. We were paying that out of the facilities fund. I moved all, everything out of the facilities account, uh, except for debt service. So everything in, in the facilities is debt service, and I put every, everything that we were taking out of facilities in, into, um, general fund operating. Uh, so that's why it wasn't on last year. But if you look at the, if you go down to, uh, facilities, you see where contract mowing was thirty-five thousand last year, and now it's zero this year. Um, just moving, moving it around. Um, pretty much the same. Uh, some of the additions, I had chopped, uh, at the amended budget, because I knew we weren't gonna spend that much, and just, just to get it down, uh, but just putting it back in there, uh, on, on most of these increases. Um, most of his, uh, uh, capital expenditures, he, fortunately, we can, we can spend street aid money for that. We're, we're needing a dump truck, and, um, and, uh, I thought I'm gonna butcher this, the, uh,
Todd, could you come to the mic?
A milling head for, for the streets. So we're, um, eh, that's, that's, we've, we've recat, we've re, uh, put together, uh, most of the equipment that Todd needs. There's always something else you need, but, um, um, for the most part, I feel like they, they're doing an outstanding job, and have some pretty doggone good equipment to do it with, and, and we're, we'll continue to build that.
Mr. Bratcher?
Oh, sorry.
What do you think? Do you wanna do rock, paper, scissors?
Oh, that would be fun.
I'll go real quick, okay, all right. Mr. Bratcher, thank you for everything. Uh, you know, we've been singing your praises for months. You've had a lot of weather to go ahead and show off what you and your team can do. Um, and I appreciate how, how lean and direct your budget is and your operations. I went back and I spoke with you, you showed me around and gave me a good tour. Um, I've seen your, your men out on the streets doing what they do, and I really appreciate it. I'm gonna ask you a question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you could wave a magic wand and ask us for what you really want for your department, can you think of some things that you would actually just like to ask for? If you could just erase dollar signs, what would, what would interest you? We, we're looking at more roads, we've got a lot of infrastructure changes. What, what would you like to see? Staff?
Equipment, we're, we're getting, the last few years, we went up on equipment a lot. Uh, back in the day, we just had shelves, we didn't have equipment apart with, but staff would be, be, be number one. It's just like a shipping service. It used to be, we'd ship one day a week, day and a half. Chris knows it. Uh, now it's four days a week, most times. So when you're putting all your workers out on one thing, kind of our, other stuff gets neglected. So maybe just a staff, probably be one or two people. But then in the next couple of years, probably be, we're, the guys, we're very fortunate to have guys, we have, we got, uh, guys that come in, all our nine, um, and all of them to be good, and their extra keys on what they do.
Yeah. And, and do you need any upgrades? Um, do you have what you need, say, for like our, our salt?
Well, that's probably put in a, uh, dump trucks last, salt truck, uh, it's fourteen years old, and it's about its last leg, and we're just trying to, so wherever the weather gets here, we're not working on, like we have been in the past, working on equipment half the night, just to salt the streets.
Mm-hmm.
That's, 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 uh, maybe a salt bin, and later on, we've discussed that in the past, but, um, we'll try to make what we got and do for, for the moment.
Well, remember, you have a magic wand, so we're not talking about trying to make do, we're talking magic, so.
A salt bin would be one of mine.
Mm-hmm. A salt bin. Do you need just one to replace the current salt bin, or would you like a second location?
Yes, ma'am, we'll try to, uh, we just have like cargo, so we have now, it's like a eighteen, a twenty. We could do something, I'm not talking about like something the P-GO has, but something a little bit more, a little more volume.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, and, and thank you so much for, for everything that you do. Again, we don't, we don't seem to see you in here as much, and I know that you're out there doing things. Um, but, so I wanna take this moment to ask you, even though it's not directly related to budget, and I heard you, Mr. Doherty, on time, is there anything that the board can do for you? Thank you.
So, Mr. Bratcher, you, you said that employees would help you. Do you think that one additional employee for this fiscal year would greatly assist your abilities?
Yes.
It would, okay. And I, I know that you and I had this, had a discussion in the back, in the past as well, perhaps a, a bucket truck?
Yes. Well, the bucket truck is, is kinda like anything, you, when you need it, you need it, but, uh, like on the track bike, like I was out here working on a street track bike.
Right.
It's not something that you, I hate to purchase something that big and let it sit.
Mm-hmm.
We work with, uh, S and W Light, there's a contractor we use, and, um, they're, they're, you know, it's, it's, they're, they come in our baby car, they're on, they're on home cars, they're just.
Right. Well, it's also for tree trimming and
Yes.
other utilizations, okay.
But I, I, I'd rather probably have a, a dump truck slash salt truck, because the one we got, it's been going down the last few months.
Right.
It's been a lot with the salt truck for fourteen years.
And that would also be a plow?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah. But you, you definitely feel at least minimum one more, if not two, but one? Right. We don't wanna burn you guys out. I mean, you guys are working a lot. So, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Hold on, I was waiting.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so I remember two years ago, when you weren't even allowed to buy boots and proper, um, uniforms for your men. So that's been changed, and I'm glad, yes, I'm glad that's been changed. We had many chats about that. So is this, uh, dump truck in the, uh, in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's, that's a good thing. Also, with, I know with our LISO program, um, there are, I call them cherry pickers, but, you know, what you're talking about, the bucket trucks, um, there has been an opportunity sometimes to acquire one of those. So maybe we could talk to the Police Department, have them?
And we have, I mean, I call it
Yes. Uh-huh.
But we're kinda, we're not getting a big bucket truck, we're just getting water collar, a one, going, something, yeah, yeah, like a Comcast and the mail south, we don't, we, we don't need more, so it'd be, 'cause they did get one, but it's really big, but we went out to go and use it, but it took up the whole road, and it's just kinda endangering the employees.
I was just, since we have, uh, the, the dump truck in the budget, I was just thinking that maybe we could, uh, let them know that that's, and I guess you have, let them know that that's something we're looking for, because I know that that's something we can acquire through LISO, and then it wouldn't cost us anything, too. So, but also, it wouldn't affect the budget at all, but maybe get you the equipment you need. So, but, um, you know, like everybody else, I mean, we see your, you and your guys out there all hours of the night. We've had a lot of storms this past season, and we just appreciate everything you do.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Quick question, um, for the mowing, do we bid this out every year, or do we just automatically award it to the same contractor that we've been using?
Talking about mowing?
Mowing.
We, we have, um, I think this is either a two or a three-year contract this time. They have been, um, and this is another thing we've, 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 we've thought about, and eventually wanna bring back in-house. Uh, it's always cheaper to mow your own grass than hire it out. But it's just a, it's, 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 it's having the, the employee capital. Um, but we're, I feel like we'll get there. It's just, uh, Public Works is a hard, hard position to, to fill. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a dying breed of worker, uh, that, that actually gotta get out there and, and work. Um, we have hired, I've had two in the budget for the last two years. One year, I think I had three. We've hired, what, four or five that didn't work out. Uh, so it's, it's just, it's, you, it's, you go through a bunch of folks, and you can talk to anybody. You, you might go through fifty before you find out one. So it's, it's just, eh, we're working at it, we're working on it. I've looked at different, uh, uh, oh, what do you call it? Not temp agencies, but different, that, that provide different, and it's just, it's, no, it's, it's hard to find that, that right person. Uh, but we're working on it.
Okay.
So how many employees total with Public Works?
Five.
Yes, now. Yes, now. Four and you, okay. And then, I mean, is there a possibility to put that in the budget to add?
Well, we've got, I've got other department heads that have asked for personnel too.
Well, but that's, I feel like the rate of pay is a big difference in what they're asking for in Public Works.
I would, I would feel more comfortable if, looking at revenue and maybe doing that in amended budget. But if it is the will of the board, I can adjust some stuff around. But I, I think, for me personally, I think, I feel like it's, I feel like it's a very solid budget as it stands.
Let me ask this question. So, if we were to hire someone versus the overtime that is forced upon the group we already have, how would that, how does that stack up?
The overtime is going to be there, most of their overtime is dependent on the weather. So, if, you know, really, it's, it's, overtime's usually the, you're going to have it every time you have a snow event, every time you have a weather event, and then it's gone. And you're going to have it regardless of how many people you have.
So, if, sorry.
Can I ask one super quick question? It's in line with what you're asking. Mr. Bratcher, when's the last time you asked for a new position?
I mean, we had, we had two in originally for this budget.
And they weren't hired?
Well, they, the budget-
I had two in, I've had two or three in the last three budgets. I had, when I, like I said, when I started out this year, and I was at 1.3 million deficit, you know, we start, we start getting into what our revenue will hold. And, you know, everybody, everybody, everybody needs staff. And it's not like we haven't been hiring. I've hired twenty-two people over the last two years, new positions. So, if revenue would hold it, I would put it in there a hundred times. And Todd knows, that is very, very important. And I take it very, I mean, keeping the roads open, keeping the, I mean, it's vital what they do.
Well, I feel like since our amended budget is typically in November, I would like, I mean, I'm just going to propose that this be a priority because if we add, or we're able to add, trying to, an employee for Public Works in November, at least that will be before all of our typical snow events happen.
I would, I would like to jump on that too and just say, if there's a way you can look at the budget and see if there's anything you could model up for us. This is such a lean group, and to see the amount of hours that they're putting in and how hard they're taxed and how long the hiring process can take. I agree with Mayor Anderson, I'd like to see this prioritized, please.
Yeah, my question was going to be, you have five staff now. How many, have you had five staff for many years? I know there's been change within the five, but-
No, no, for the longest, just three of them. And then we hired one, and he worked out good. We hired a few along the way, but we got a physical demanding.
Sure.
I got one that we don't like to show him on call, and I understand that. He's got a family and a young kid, but, you know, that's another thing. He's, he has a twenty-four-hour on-call, that's kind of, that's why we try to work in sessions, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I guess the reason I ask that is, because I know other departments have, we have added a lot over the last year or two, quite a few positions needed. But I think the timing of it is a question mark, right? When we have the budget to do so. But I think that it should remain top priority that as the budget becomes available before anyone else gets what they're looking for, you guys get first dibs on that to be able to expand, to at least, you know, add a guy or two just to improve your situation. And I think that's a reasonable ask. I don't know when the timeline of that would be. But, you know, when it comes available, I think the argument that the other departments have expanded quite a bit. So, I think they have sufficient staff to be able to maintain their current workload.
And with our city growing the way it is, you're just going to have more leaves, more chipping, all of that. So, it's just going to add to your workload. And also, I do want you to know that, we know that people are not following the, you know, the length and width and height and everything on the branches and stuff. I see it out there. So, we keep mentioning, I just wanted to let you know. We keep mentioning for them to look on the website and get the criteria. So, if you see, especially like down, there's one on Chester, I keep bringing it up. I don't even, you know, I might go knock on their door and just kind of say, hey, and talk to them. But they have that all the way across the front of their property, and I know you can't chip that, so. Okay, all right.
With that, Tom, I would appreciate if you can look at the budget wherever we can take some things away, furniture, even uniforms for us. I mean, I'm willing to forego whatever we need to give the departments what they need. I'm just putting that out there. And I really think that at least one more would definitely help this department, even during the summer year, summertime, especially with trimming and cutting and doing everything that these guys do.
With the, with the current budget, with the conservative numbers, I'm showing just under a ninety-thousand-dollar surplus. I can put one in with still be in the black, conservatively. I'm expecting revenues to spike, but as I told the board earlier, I'm not going to bud, budget on what I expect. This is where we are. But, you know, I can add one, it's just, for me, it was easier, it's hard for me to-
You don't have to answer right now, you can answer in the future.
But I'll, I'll keep that in mind.
I just think that, I feel like that's a priority, not just for Public Works, but for the board as well, to give these departments what they need.
Thank you.
We've got parks left. We can either go over now and maybe go into the meeting time a little bit, or we can stop and just go over during the line item at the, at the meeting. I wanted to touch on a couple other spreadsheets that I gave you, but I'll do whatever the board wants to do on that.
Okay, so, we are, we do have an agenda item for this. So, what would the board like? Do we want to continue just this last department and then the few things that Tom wants to add? Or do we want to do it now and go into our board meeting? Okay, so, we're going to recess for, let's see, I'd say about ten minutes, and then we'll start our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioner meeting and continue our budget talks then. Thank you.